Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board to order for Tuesday, April 24th. Roll call, please.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yep.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Malcheski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
And trustee Bukowski is excused this evening.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all the men and women we have throughout the world. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. If there are none, I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I need an action on the Village Board meeting minutes from March 27, 2018. And the closed minutes from March 27, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. With motion and a second to approve those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, we have comments from the public. You must limit them to five minutes or less, and it can be on nothing that is on the agenda. Anything other than on the agenda? Any comments? Moving forward. Number seven, written communications and announcements. Does anybody have any? I have none.
We got the one communication from that one resident on Gillis Park Playground.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
An email on there.
The email that I sent to everyone?
Right.
Yeah, she was asking why, which we'll get to the explanation when we get to the Gillis Park Playground. Okay. Number eight, action on the consent agenda, which is a request to approve operator licenses, department reports for April 2018, budgeted expenditures, and that's it. Need a motion to approve that.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action items, 9A, action on resolution 4-2-18, resolution authorizing the issuance of $13,505,000 general obligation promissory notes and the issuance and sale of a $13,505,000 taxable note anticipation note in anticipation thereof.
Yeah, it's a lot to absorb. So basically, it's a bonding, and Brad Viegut from RW Baird will get in more detail with the different bonding types. But in summary, we're bonding four items we've talked about in the past, the baseball stadium, the land acquisition demolition, Mike McCarthy Way road reconstruction, Manso flats, TIF incentive, and some sidewalks on Ridge Road. We got some final numbers last week, so we're able to actually reduce the amount of money needed for the Mike McCarthy Way road reconstruction. The bids came in significantly lower, so we're able to drop the bonding need by $700,000. So those are all projects that we've talked about and approved. This is just to get the funding for it, and there's a different mechanism, or we've used it before, but it's not just a traditional borrow once and be done, and Brad will walk through what that NAND means versus a regular bonding, so.
Okay. So first, this is a taxable note anticipation note, and because of the cost reduction for project costs, the issue size is $12,805,000, and the resolutions, the resolution that you're considering tonight does reflect that 12, I'm sorry, $12,805,000 amount. This note anticipation note is simply a short-term borrowing in anticipation of long-term debt. It's to fund the projects that Greg outlined, and then in July, this taxable note will be split into two separate long-term borrowings. One will be tax-exempt, and that will fund sidewalk projects and the Mike McCarthy Way road project, and then all of the other projects will be funded with a taxable long-term bond. This first step gets the Village to the position of issuing 20-year debt for these obligations, so the 20-year debt is going to better tie with the agreement with the Bullfrogs, for example, and the revenues anticipated from the TIF districts to help repay this debt. The interest rate that's available, 2.89%, and these funds will settle on May 15th of this year. Now, there's a scheduled maturity date of November 15th, but a first call feature in August. So the plan, I'll come back in front of you in July with the final long-term financings for your approval, and once that's approved, the short-term note will be paid off in August. So this is just the first step of a two-step process. This issue is non-rated. We'll have the, we'll get a Moody's rating with the two long-term issues in the summer, and the purchaser is Zion's Bank out of Utah. So I'd be glad to go into additional detail if you like, or answer questions on this.
Anybody have any questions?
Is long-term rates more favorable right now, or for the wait?
Long-term rates have been holding steady for 20-year debt. The short-term rates have been increasing over the last, so, six months or so, and long-term, we're estimating just over 3.5% for the tax-exempt piece, and on the 20-year taxable piece, the estimate is 4.2%.
Farther off to take a bunch of short-term ones, then.
Well, then you have that risk though, for the next 20 years of rates changing. It's more like a variable rate product at that point.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have, everybody understands the projects that we're doing these borrowings for?
Through the length of the loan, if the interest rate lowers, can we do that?
Yeah, on the long-term debt, you'll have call features, and that, so that's your ability to prepay that debt. So the Village would need to pay off the old debt and then reissue new debt if interest rates improve. So you'd have that option. It would not, so the first call feature would be 2024, so there's really like a six-year window that you're locked out from prepaying the debt, but after those first six, seven years, depending on the market, then you'd have that option.
What's considered, you have taxable and non-taxable, but what's the difference between the two? What part of the projects are taxable and non-taxable?
Yeah, anything that's supported with a private development agreement or supported with, or that has a private purpose instead of a public purpose would not be eligible for tax-exempt financing. So that's really the distinction.
And then I did have a question on.
Here's your mic.
On the projects in general, the $80,000 for the sidewalks on Ridge, where are those?
Default to Doug.
There's in the plan to put some sidewalks on the east side of Ridge Road between Lambo Field, if you will, and Morris Avenue. There are sidewalks on the west side. We're trying to get two lanes of pedestrian traffic, if you will.
Right.
Heading up towards Lambo. We're planning on putting, combining that work with our Marvell Lane work right here with the Slindy Development, so we can get good prices on all of that sidewalk.
Okay.
Doug, we discussed Cormier from Ridge down. Is that, that's not in this part of the project? We're still studying that yet? We were somewhere on that, and I don't.
Yeah, that's something that will be coming in the future, the, gosh, the Bike and Pet Plan has it in it, but there was also the surveys that had gone out, and that's, I believe, still being reviewed and setting up that project, and when it would happen will be coming in the future.
Okay.
Our long-term bonding plan has it for 2019 at this point.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 4-2-18 for $12,805,000. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 4-2-18 for $12,805,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, 9B, request to approve ordinance 04-1-18, amending Section 3-2-92 pertaining to licensed outdoor premises. Who's taking this one? That would be Allison.
Sorry, just finding my page. Our request is to amend our outdoor licensed premises, premises, in order to provide some greater flexibility for our outdoor patio areas. Right now, it suggests that those should be fenced or have some sort of structure, and staff-wise, we don't feel that it's very clear in terms of the methods in which you could do that to kind of delineate that area, and we don't necessarily, as we do redevelopment and people pull their buildings towards the front, we don't necessarily want our sidewalks now lined with fences, so we may be more open to planters and other ways in which to kind of delineate those areas. The ordinance is also amended to address outdoor music. Currently, it would not be permitted on Sundays at all, and then Thursdays are more limited. This opens that up, extends the hours a little bit, particularly with like more acoustical or something where it's not very loud and you're not necessarily hearing it off of the site, but also allows for more music on Thursday in terms of, previously that was pretty limited, and we're seeing more and more happen kind of the weekend, starting a little bit more on Thursday than on Friday.
Public Works, went before Public Works, and the only amendment that we had on it was to also recommend not to start before time in the morning, but it equals to what the construction timelines are for construction in the Village as well, so.
You were talking about not putting fences up like we have been requiring, going along with planters. Is that, you know, is that something that they're going to have to bring it, bring out and bring indoor and events, and I guess I'll have to use the Packers as an event? Things of that nature on events?
Well.
What are you, what are you expecting people to do there?
I guess my expectation is that we're open to whatever they could present to us, but let's take Hinterland, for example. They have long, long planters, but then there's kind of a chain or a rope, basically, that goes between them. I don't know that that actually gets removed because they are a separate premises from the other premises within the Titletown District, so everybody still has to adhere to their requirements. There's, open containers allow, which is a different issue, I guess, if you will, but in terms of serving and having a contained area, this is really what we're looking at. Because things come in in winter, they may very well change, but we're really looking for the license holder to come in and present to us what their plan is in terms of delineating that area and having a secure area.
So in other words, they will come with a plan on what it's going to look like versus what we're accustomed to right now, but the planters will be an anchor to put ropes in there on the events that we're discussing? Is that what you're saying?
In that situation, it is. It's just that they've got to be able to control them. It's not necessary to put a rope between the planters.
You just have to contain.
It's not.
No.
Not, and I'm just going to use any one of the bars, right now they do do the fencing, so the people will come and go as they please, then?
As long as they can maintain their premise, I think that'd be okay according to ways of.
Well, that's what we're trying to look at, like for them to control their access or whatnot. We just don't want it to just always be fences, if you will.
Well, I understand that. That's not the most pleasing thing. We're accustomed to that, and one thing I'm involved in, but, all right, as long as you understand that the planters or whatever would be more of a permanent thing than something rolling in and out for whatever event is coming up.
Correct, and don't necessarily think about it just for events. Think about it as you're a restaurant open 365 days a year, and you now have a patio out there where people show up every day to eat lunch. When it's nice, they'll sit outside, and so then you want to be able to serve alcohol or have your same operations you have inside your restaurant spill to the outside, but you still need to delineate that area. So it's more meant for the everyday, Green Bay Distillery, for example, has an outdoor space. You can go out there anytime, you can drink out there, but they have a fence around it, and we're saying maybe not, in that case, a fence works and looks attractive. Maybe that's not the case all the time.
Okay, will decorative fences still be allowed?
Yes.
They will?
It's just trying to be more user-friendly, if you will, a little more flexible.
Well, I've seen some decorative fences, so-called decorative fences, but they're all banged up from cars hitting them, too.
Correct.
There's no buffer between the car bumper, let's say, and the fence, so when you hit the fence, it'll stop.
Right.
That's good.
I think, too, you know, it's each individual property owner will come forward with their plan for their property and have that approved, so.
Very good.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 04-1-18.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 04-1-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9C, request to approve resolution R4-3-18 and storm water management agreement with WPS. That would be Allison.
I can, I can jump in as well.
Or Tony.
What we have attached here is an agreement with WPS as well as a resolution that formally approves that agreement. Basically, the Village would like to enter into this agreement regarding storm water management with WPS with respect to their land that's located along the Ashland Access Road. They're redeveloping a part of that property as a training center, and in order to meet their storm water requirements, we've come up with this attached agreement in which WPS would cost share in upsizing the storm sewer capacity in that area. The current storm sewer does have some issues with capacity at this point, and as part of the redevelopment, again, they would be sharing in the cost to upsize this storm sewer, and this is an agreement that formalizes that agreement.
Where's the pond out there increasing the size in?
They won't be, they're, they'll be increasing the storm water pipe is what will be upsized, and then they won't be actually having a pond on-site.
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that, Tony. During the site plan review, part of the, the WPS meeting, their storm art requirements, they have a pond that they actually designed a pond in the front of that new WEC training facility. They didn't have enough room to make a big enough pond, so they are willing to contribute some funds, that's where this agreement came from, funds to put towards up-sizing the storm sewer. So that was, you know, there's some calculations that were done, and that was the trade-off that we agreed to.
Does this cover that upgrade?
It covers a portion of that upgrade, their portion, basically. You know, the Village is funding the majority of that project, which it's actually being bid out right now, so that helps, you know, other properties in that area, not just, not just WPS.
Where's that, where's that line run? Is that for All Ashland Avenue or something?
It's the, so the access road that goes between Baiton Road and Hanson Road, so right in front of that new WEC facility. So the existing storm sewer runs from Hanson Road to the south of Baiton Road, discharges that to Schwabonan Creek. This new line will go, actually go north down Hanson, along Hanson Road, discharge into that storm sewer.
Steve, is that on, is that mostly on the new site they're building there?
The, it was a portion of that site, yeah. Like they did their own design for their facility, but the storm sewer pipe will run down in front of their facility to the north, down in front of Gani Clay Products, in front of Wesco, and then down the south side of Hanson Road.
Okay, okay.
So we've approached those property owners. We've gotten easements for the construction of the storm sewer and all that. The next, actually in two weeks, we have a, it's being advertised right now, the bid opening is in two weeks.
Any other questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve Resolution R4-3-18 for the WPS water storm management. Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution R4-3-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9D, action on Gillis Park playground equipment. Rex.
All right. Last year, we had to remove the Gillis Park Playground. It was over 25 years old. Many of the clamps were falling off, becoming unsafe, and it was just time to redo that whole general playground area. As such, we planned this summer on installing a new structure, some new swings. We're still taking out a few items that are located in the park. So what we did is we put the structure out for bid with the $35,000 cost, and the different playground manufacturers, there's six of them, six main ones, they all had discussions with myself, and then I brought those ideas back to staff, and there was a process going back and forth on what playground structures were to be submitted. We did it as a bid versus just a submittal, although we could have done it just as a submittal because it's all $35,000 cost, each one of them, that's what the price is. There were, unfortunately, several playground manufacturers that after our discussions of what they were going to submit and how they're going to submit it, they submitted a totally different playground, which made it very unfair to the ones that submitted the correct type of playground that we were requesting in terms of some of the features, some of the amenities. Because in the bid packet, it does say that what's being awarded to, or what's going to be awarded is going to be based on a combination of public voting, Village staff recommendation as well as Park Board and Village Board recommendation, I still allowed them all to be put out for the public voting. Unfortunately, one of the ones that is not recommended was the Top Boat Getter, which is no surprise because they used a different type of material in terms of spreading it out more, and they used smaller-sized posts. But looking through them, the Gillis Park submittal from Gerber Leisure Products is the one that we are recommending. It crosses the line in that it's one of the staff recommendations, as well as it received the most votes out of the ones that the staff felt comfortable with based on the conversations and dealings with each manufacturer. So unfortunately, there's been a little bit of confusion, and lesson learned, really, some of them just should have been disqualified right out of the gate, and that was, that was my bad, quite honestly, but staff is recommending at this point the Gerber Leisure Product Structure for Gillis Park. We did have this discussion quite in length at the Park Board level last week. They also recommended 7O to go with the Gerber Leisure Structure product.
Rex, can you show the two that are in question here, please?
Sure.
That they know.
Allison has the Gerber Leisure Product Structure, and then the one I'm holding is the one from PlayWorld. Great manufacturer, we've worked with them before, but quite honestly, they went a little renegade on us and submitted something totally different from what was discussed. As such, we don't appreciate that, quite honestly. As such, we're recommending the Gerber Leisure Product Structure.
So you're going with the one that Allison's holding, which I believe I'm looking at right now. Now, why was there discussion from some email that we've got here about space above the ground?
There's, there's, there's different, I mean, every, every structure has ropes, every single one of them, including the Gillis one. The Gillis one has a rope bridge, this one has more of a vertical rope structure, so I don't know if that was visible in all of the things, but there's ropes on every single one of them, and it's not just ropes, the ropes are wrapped around cables, very thick metal cabling, and so they're not going to be able to be cut, if that's what the concern was.
Well, I, that was one of the issues that I heard.
Yep.
And about the gathering area on the top, on the, on the top, what was that all about?
Well, this is, this is the, it's a larger area, a larger platform on top, so you can probably have three or four kids sitting up there and talking and playing.
Yeah.
You know, chasing each other around a little bit versus on the Gillis structure underneath, thanks Allison, underneath these roofs, it's a smaller, more of a four-by-four type of platform, not as much room. Now, Gillis Park occasionally in the past has had some kids that were, that go to the park that are sometimes unsupervised due to the apartments that are close by, and I believe the residents that expressed the concern, you know, had the concern that that would be a spot for the kids to hang out. Well, yeah, it would be, but that's kind of what we want, is we want the kids to want to come to the park and use the playground equipment and play on the equipment and kind of hang out around it. So that's more of a philosophical issue in terms of, do you want the kids there and using it and playing on it and hanging out, or do we not want it?
Oh, you, you want to draw kids to the park.
Yeah, they're all, they're all good designs in and of themselves. I mean, I, but, but again, Gerber is the one that is, we're recommending.
Okay. I had another thought, and then I lost it. All right, all right, that's fine, if you covered all the bases of making sure you got the right equipment. Oh, I know what the question was. You're spending $35,000 on that. Gerber Park is the third smallest park we got in the park system. Is that normal to spend that kind of money on a less than, or about an acre of land?
In comparison, there's probably about $150,000 to $175,000 for the playground equipment, just at Sand Acres, so for a single structure at Gillis, that would be, I mean, it's a single, it's a single structure, you know, it's not a huge expansion or anything like that, and then with that, we're also, there's some other dollars that have been set aside. We're going to purchase a new swing set and two new spring animals. So it will be one of the smaller, I guess, playgrounds in our system.
Without a doubt.
Even, even with that, even at $35,000, yeah, it'll still be one of the smallest, and that's just what it goes for.
Well, I don't want to see what else I'm thinking. All right.
I can guess. Okay.
I'll let.
Any other questions on the playground equipment or the features or anything?
Are either of these in Sand Acres, these two manufacturers, or is that a different one altogether?
Gerber is probably at about, at least four or five parks. Gillis is the same manufacturer that's at Sand Acres. We also have, that's from Lee Recreation, PlayWorld Systems. We also have that at about four or five parks, so both of them are at multiple parks. Both have held up well in terms of standing the test of time.
Rex, what's the most-used park in our system?
For playground equipment?
Yeah.
Sand Acres.
Sand Acres.
Probably Ashwabonay is second, just because of the volume of people that go through Ashwabonay.
Okay.
But in terms of more, in terms of neighborhood parks, Sand Acres by far.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we go with Gerber Leisure Project's recommendation. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go with the Gerber Leisure Products for the Gillis Park Playground Equipment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, and the process will be tweaked the next time around, so this hopefully will not happen again, so thank you for your patience.
Okay, 9E, action on updated Village of Ashwabonan Bike and Pedestrian Plan. Rex.
The Bike and Pet Committee has been working on the Bike and Pet Plan, the update for the last year, including holding a public meeting in mid-March, as well as sending out as well as sending out a survey for the Cormier Road sidewalks. As such, we've had multiple revisions. Aaron Schute has been gracious enough to spend much time revising all of the mapping that is included in the plan. And that's what you have presented to you this evening. I will say for the Bike and Pedestrian Comprehensive Plan, it is, is just a plan. There's a lot of things in it. Doesn't mean one, that doesn't mean 30 of them are going to get done. Each individual project is standalone and would need to come forth to village board for individual approval to move forward with it. But this is just the plan, to plan out what some of the projects would be as, as we move forward. So what I'm, what I'm looking for tonight is just to see if there's any questions on the plan and then acceptance of the plan by, by the village.
In, in reading through the, the plan, I, I guess I, I kind of like to also call this Bike and Pet Wishlist.
Correct.
It, it is, if, but if you don't have the project in the plan, if you want to apply for funding, it's not considered for funding. So that's why you have to have it, even though it may never happen.
Right, correct. And a, and a lot of the changes in the plan, just to let people know, involve areas around the Title Town District and the Sports and Entertainment District, just to start to deal with some of the larger crowds that are going to be expected.
Rex, I have to say that one thing about this plan is that the projects are buried in here. I don't know where they are. I, I mean, I've looked through it and I'm trying to find where the projects. It's listing everything but projects, it seems like.
Well, it's a, it's a comprehensive plan, so they're, I, I mean, we, they, they should be separated by pedestrian projects and bicycle projects. There's two, two distinct areas that have, have those lists.
Well, at one, I would just, it, it's, you know, you have to really look for it, you know, so, you know, I see goals and stuff like that, but I don't know if those are individual projects or not. I mean, it's a big report, so I didn't read the whole thing. Is it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, it's all right. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, comment taken. I mean, we can, I mean, the next, the next update that we do, which will be in, we'll start it in four years because we, it should be updated about every five years. We can certainly talk about that at the Bike and Pet Committee level, about how do we make that stand out more. But, but it is in there. It, it, because of the, because of the depth of the plan, what's that? Recommendations, Allison is saying start on page 63. I don't have the whole booklet in front of me right now. But yes, they're, they are, they are in there. We thought they were clear.
Yeah. Page 63 of a, of the whole report. So I mean, that's buried inside there as far as I'm concerned. I thought, I'd rather have it front and center. But anyways.
Yeah, exactly. We can do, I, I think, an executive summary for the next planning piece. So it's more front, the specific recommendations are more front and center.
I'll make the motion to approve the updated bicycle and pedestrian plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the updated comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle plan. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rex. Nine F, review and action regarding Mike McCarthy Way reconstruction contract. Mr. Martin.
Okay, this project, I think everybody's pretty well versed in, but this is with, with the upcoming development of, of two hotels along Mike McCarthy Way. We're going to be moving forward or we're tasked with getting the utilities replaced and, and sized adequately to handle not only these two developments, but future development along Mike McCarthy Way and then reconstruct the roadway as well after, after the utilities are completed. So we've been working with Craig Shu from Ayers Associates. I have to give him his due because he put a lot of hard work in crunching all of this together over the past couple of months to get this out to bid. And he doesn't have any gray hair for it, and I'm jealous about that. But we do appreciate Craig's work on the design of, of this project. Put it out to bid beginning of this month, had six prequal, six bidders off of our prequalified list that submitted bids ranging from just a little over 2.3 million to just under 3.4 million, with the lowest responsible bidder being Peters Concrete for $2,315,193.50. As part of this bid package, there's the utility work, there's the roadway work, and then we had a couple of alternates. One of the alternates, the first alternate was to construct a parking lot on the north side of Mike McCarthy Way where the former truck equipment site was. And that was going to be built in preparation, if you will, for a couple of other developments. Or it was contingent upon a couple of other developments happening along Holmgren Way. Those have, have not come to fruition, so that alternate was not selected. So we won't be moving forward with the parking lot construction. And then there is one for $1,200. It's an alternate to save some of the storm sewer pipe to use over at Ashwabamie for the creek project that's going on there. They'll be using some of the storm sewer pipe to put around trees and sink it into the waterway to hold the trees in place for aquatic animals. So the recommendation from staff after that long-winded explanation would be to approve the bid and, and award it to Peters Concrete Company for the base bid of 2.2315,193.50 and a selection of alternate bid item number two, which is the reuse of that concrete pipe for $1,200. So that brings us a total bid of 2, 2,316,393.50. In terms of schedule, I'll just mention that quickly. Looking to start the project, the week of May 7th is what we're getting from the contractor. The contracts are, are here already. And looking for the project to wrap up towards the middle to end, I would say, of September. It will go into the packer season a little bit. This is a large project that we are trying to get done as quickly as possible, but it will go into the season this year. The hope is to have a couple of the travel lanes open for our regular season. We'll still be doing work on the outside. If everybody remembers Oneida Street, that's kind of what we had at that point in time. We got a couple of the travel lanes open, but the outside lanes were, were closed to construction. That is our goal. Hopefully, we don't have any 24-inch snowfalls in May, June, July, or August. So if you can help us out on that, we'd appreciate it.
I would also like to thank the staff and Craig from Ayers. They did, this was actually supposed to be done next year. And with the developments that are going on, we asked if there was any possible way we could get it done this year because we didn't want the developers to get their project up and then have the road be torn up in front of them all next year at their opening year. So they did an excellent job in, in making this happen. So thanks.
Doug, is this the first time we've done work with Peters?
As a, as a prime contractor?
Yeah.
It has been. Their sub, who is doing the concrete work, Summers Construction, did the section of Mike McCarthy Way between Holmgren and Oneida. Their utility companies have done, Ayers has had numerous projects with them and feels comfortable with them.
Okay, are we going to have the road similar to what's from Holmgren to Oneida Street as far as walkways and things of that nature?
The road will look, look exactly the same. There'll be sidewalk on both sides on the stretch.
On both sides?
Yes.
All right, very good.
So this, this 2.3 million does not include the parking lot?
That is correct. That includes the utility construction and the roadway reconstruction.
Okay, so, so obviously then, you know, something happened where, where the other development, that, that potentially could be, that would come up in a hurry, that would have to come up for a second bid, right?
Correct.
That's separate.
Correct. Without, without us accepting this bid, it would have to get rebid. This alternate, correct.
Without us accepting this?
Correct. It would have to get rebid again.
But accepting this, it wouldn't have to get rebid again. It could just get added. I don't understand that part. I guess I'm a little confused.
Nope, no, by not accepting that alternative, that alternate, if we would also decide that we want to build the parking lot, we would have to rebid it again, the, the parking lot portion of it.
Right.
Yes.
We've been in touch with the developer and we just don't feel like that's going to happen. We've let them know our timeline to make it happen. We also analyzed in terms of just packer parking alone, would we be able to generate enough revenue to pay it off? Our earlier projections based on other parking that would happen, had it pay off relatively quickly, it was like a three to four-year deal. If we would just look at packer parking, it would take us more than 10 years to pay that back and it just does not make financial sense. I mean, if you want to do that, you can, but would not be our recommendation at this point. Just doesn't seem to really make sense at this point. But we did consider it. And that's why we continued to bid it, so we kind of gave ourselves as much time as possible. And then with the thought that, well, and it did come in low, but it came in really low and we could still kind of cash flow it somehow in a reasonable fashion, we'd maybe still recommend doing it. But that did not happen.
And, and that's part of the reason why we put it as an alternate bid. If we had it as part of the bid package and then we pulled it out, there are regulations in terms of how much of a contract you can eliminate before you have to junk the whole bid and redo it. So we took it and set it aside as an alternate bid. That way, it gives the village the option to choose it or not choose it, and it doesn't affect all the other bid prices.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve 2, 2,315,193.50 and selection of the alternate bid number two for Peters Concrete. I believe, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Peters Concrete Company's bid of 2,315,193.50 and the alternate bid number two for?
$1,200.
$1,200. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carried.
And then just one last tidy up item on this project. If you remember when the first portion of Mike McCarthy Way was done, the overhead lines were put underground and a bunch of the other utilities were put underground through that corridor. That is the plan along this stretch also. However, with, with the compressed construction schedule we had this year, W P S needs more lead time in designing their utilities to go underground and acquiring easements and things of that nature. So we'll be working with them through this summer, fall to get that work set for next year. So you'll probably see some additional work happening out there next year in terms of getting some of those utilities put underground and then we'll be finishing off some of the sidewalk at that time as well. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, nine G, review and action on Coronas and Main Avenue ponds construction contract award. Mr. Burr.
So the item for you tonight is the two stormwater ponds we talked about at budget time. One is the Coronas Pond located ironically up on Coronas Drive. It's by the retired firefighters, you know, their property up there along Ashwabanon Creek. The second pond is the Main Avenue Pond located north side of Main Avenue, east of Commodity, west side of Sand Acres. There's a current pond there now. We, from a D and R standpoint, we have to clean that one out and actually make it a wet pond. Right now, it's more of a dry pond. So the two projects here, we, we lumped them together to get, we're hoping for better, you know, for, for good prices by doing it that way versus two separate contracts. So one, one contractor, we had three qualified contractors bid on it and the lowest bidder ironically was Peters Concrete in the amount of $860,025.5. So our recommendation from staff is to award the two pond, two stormwater pond contract to Peters Concrete Company.
Steve, the one on Ashland, that, is that done or that's coming forward?
So, yeah, the Ashland Pond, that's the third pond we'll be doing this summer. That one's coming forward next month.
Okay, all right. All right, if there's no questions, I'll move to approve the bid for Peters Contract for the cost of $860,025.5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the pond contract to Peters Concrete for $860,025.5. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carried. H, committee appointments. Says Terry, but those are?
I'll move to approve the committee appointments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve committee appointments for May 1, 2018 to April 30, 2019. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Motion carried. A, annual distribution of public officials and employees code of ethics.
Just an informational item for your reading pleasure. Ethical standards of conduct for those elected and those of employment of the Village of Ashwabanon.
Okay.
Move to go to closed session.
Items for next agenda.
Anybody have items? If you do, call the office. We'll get them on the agenda.
Closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G for the purpose of, A, discussion of possible action on legal advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved as it pertains to claims by H and K Partners LLC. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 2 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Okay. Motion, do we need a?
Move to go to closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to go in closed session. Voice.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams. Trustee Mel Chesky.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
With trustee Bukowski excused. We are in closed session.